So some kind of real word, somebody would bring a stick of butter every week and put it in the employee fridge. It's not like three months.
So much better. Sounds really expensive. Yeah.
I think it's worth the price.
Yeah.
This time will call me to order.
Father, we love you. We thank you for the day you've given us. Thank you for the privilege of living in this great country. Privilege of being here tonight. I pray that you could reside and help this meeting, Lord, go for your will. And give you praise for all that you are and all that you do in Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There any changes to our agenda? Take a approval for the agenda.
So moved.
The move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Beldon to approve the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, on my favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to public comments. This is the time where citizens are encouraged to speak publicly. Request to state your name and address, speak respectfully, limit your comments for three minutes. Seeing no public. Moving on to items scheduled at a certain time for the public hearing to establish rural housing incentive district. The public hearing is now open.
Eric, commissioners, if there's no public to speak, I'll kind of go through the study and plan and bring that back to you then, and then we can look through the action items. In your packet is the proposed redevelopment plan and feasibility study, so we'll walk through that, and that way if our audience at home wants to look at that, or review it a little bit later, they certainly can. Uh, we've been talking a lot about housing and we're embarking on our first housing project and this topic, this redevelopment plan is specifically related to what we're calling the St. Joseph subdivision, which is the area that, uh, land where the old hospital was, is, and that will be donated to the forty land bank for the purposes of housing. So geographically, we're in that location. The, um, redevelopment plan in your packet talks, it has to follow a certain format to meet state statute. And so we have our, our feasibility study, which is attachment A, and then we'll go through that here shortly. Uh, the feasibility study shows that, um, we'll be using funds from the city CIP project, which is approximately hundred and forty-four thousand, along with our remaining ARPA allocation, which can be used toward water and sewer infrastructure projects, and that is approximately three hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. Um, along with all of the funds expected to be generated from the incremental increase in property taxes as a result of building these homes to repay the bonds issued to construct the public infrastructure, which includes water, sewer, storm sewer, sanitary sewer, street, and storm on any public sidewalks. Um, we are showing a projected deficit of about three hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars. So we'll go through the rest of this and we'll come back and speak to that. But that'll be a decision point for, for commissioners tonight to decide if you want to move forward based on that projection. Uh, that number is based on a, uh, twelve percent estimated increase in the design construction of bonding costs since we last discussed this in August. So in August, everything looked beautiful. We ended up with this slight positive, I think it was forty-six thousand to the positive at the end. Now those costs have gone up, the estimated costs, and so now we're a little bit to the negative. Um, also included in the redevelopment plan, page two, uh, gives the basic description, which again is impus- planned infrastructure improvements for public use within the geographic area identified to help address a community-wide housing shortage that's our purpose. Again, uh, completion of Sunflower Road, construction of associated public sidewalks, installation of public water, sanitary sewer and storm sewer utilities to serve those new homes within that development. So what's important for the public to know is that the only, um, the incremental property taxes from those homes in that area are intended to repay those bonds, now that that debt that we talked about would have to be paid by the city. With your reference, the Concordia twenty-eleven comprehensive plan, and we reference, uh, three chapters in that. Chapter three is housing. This project is aligned with meeting housing and workforce needs within the community. Uh, the housing study in twenty-twenty-two showed that we did have a shortage of moderate income homes. Chapter four, economic development, uh, it's important that to note that the lack of adequate and affordable housing was identified as a primary barrier to business growth and development according to that housing study. And then chapter nine, we discuss future land use. So within the comprehensive plan, there is a future land use map associated that, and it's supposed to guide how we use land. At the time that that map was done, it did not anticipate the hospital moving locations. So we're discussing in here that now that the hospitals move locations and that that board had agreed that the repurposing of that land for housing would be an appropriate appropriate use of that property. Um, that's why we're proceeding with this, even though it doesn't align with what's shown on, on that comprehensive plan from over a decade ago. So as we work through the comprehensive plan update this year, we'll be updating the use of that property for residential purposes. We also have to include the description of the areas to be redeveloped, and we've described those by legal description and, and in general. Uh, there are two parcels. One parcel is at eleven hundred Highland Drive, which is where the hospital is at proper. And the other one is the lots one through seven, block two, Los, Los Creek Hills addition area on the south side of yet to be built, Sunflower Drive. So there's two parcels. Both of those are currently have an appraised value of zero dollars. Um, like the market value shown there, but because Cloud County Health Center, Inc. was a tax exempt um, entity, and because they own the property, the assessed valuation is actually zero, which is actually favorable for us to capture that full increment of property taxes. We also have to discuss the property acquisition, uh, property sale and relocation assistance plan. In this case, the property was donated to the land bank. And at the time that this, uh, redevelopment plan was written, which was December of last year, the property was not occupied. So we don't, we're not obligated for any relocation assistance as a result of, of doing this project. We list the interested par- parties, which is the city and Cloud County Health Center. Um, and then other information necessary. And that's where we tied this back to the moderate income housing grant. At the time that this was written, it was a few days before we were announced that we actually received the grant. And so this indicates that we had not yet, um, that we had applied, but had not get heard. So we did receive the grant. Um, and, and we are working toward the construction of twelve moderate income homes and four high-income homes on these projects. Any questions so far? Okay. We'll move to exhibit eight, the feasibility study, and I draw your attention to the large landscape, um, landscape layout spreadsheet. And this kind of shows, shows you how the how the tax increment based on a six-year build out of the, of the project would go and how much money would flow back into the bonds for repayment. So we start with a, a year one, which we anticipate in that first year that the rural housing incentive district is in place. We won't see any increment because we know that we have to build infrastructure first, and then we have to build homes. And then once that home is built and sold, then it will start generating property tax. I can draw your attention over to the far right column. So it's just after the column that says twenty forty-seven, which is when this rural housing incentive district would expire. Toward the bottom, you'll see that negative three twelve two eighty-eight. And again, that that is the gap that we have in financing this, um, with the homes that are built on that property. Again, this is a fairly conservative estimate based on what we can gather from current market conditions. This is based on a six-year build out, and you can see up at the top where we think it's lagging staggered sales here, years one through year six. If we were to build these homes faster, or if these homes ended up being valued at higher than two hundred thousand and higher than three hundred and fifty thousand, depending on if they're moderate income or high income homes, this gap will shrink. If the homes are built slower or if they're lower valued, that gap will increase. So either way, what happens, and, and Kevin counts on the, uh, on Zoom with us too to help answer some questions. But the way this would be structured, which we typically notes, and then general obligation bonds. If we end up with a gap, then that does fall back to the general obligation of the city. I think that's, that's a decision point for you as commissioners to make. We do have that nine and a half of bonding capacity that's been built in. It's listed in our CIP as being allocated toward a housing subdivision here. And you talked about that at our budget study session, and it included that there. So we could allocate this gap toward that available bonding capacity. So that, again, we can do that, like my point is, we can do this project without having to increase property taxes. We can issue these bonds and absorb that gap within that available bonding capacity. And where that came from, just as a reminder for everybody, was we had a couple of debt service that retired, but we did not reduce the mill levy during that time because we anticipated this project coming forward. So we left that in place so that we would have that bonding capacity without having to fluctuate the mill levy down one year and then back up another year. Are there any questions so far? Evan, you have anything to add?
Not really. Um, maybe just amplify that for the, the reason you referenced earlier on the feasibility and the eighty-eight thousand kind of base value that were, were a little better than that. And I'm just fiddling around with numbers. And if you, you run that through, i- if that's actual value, what's the assessed value? Um, not a huge number, um, when you start from a lower base value than what is shown in the feasibility study, but it does improve that gap a little bit. I mean, probably roughly forty to fifty thousand dollars. So, um, anyway, there's still a bit of a gap there. And you, you may have mentioned or talked about this at different, different times. Um, you know, the, the increment we're talking about is just the ad valorem tax increment. And again, if you're kind of thinking about gaps and what does this mean that, you know, you'll have new water, sewer, electric customers as well. And, and that's not part of the feasibility, um, that I have seen. And again, can't put a number to it, but those things are all probably contributing to whatever the perceived gap may be over twenty-five years.
So what Kevin is referencing, something we just discovered today here up in the packet, if, if you're looking at that feasibility study, under the column labeled twenty twenty-three, year one, the row labeled initial valuation, we had it listed at eighty-eight thousand, eight twenty. And again, that was pulling the numbers of what that property would be valued based on the appraisers data. But as we dug deeper, we found out it's really a zero valuation because they're an exempt entity. So that eighty-eight thousand should actually drop to zero, which would increase the incremental increment that we capture. So that should reduce the gap below the three hundred and twelve thousand. So Kevin's saying that should drop that about another forty thousand dollars, so.
I mean, the, the good news is that means the feasibility study that you're looking at is very conservative and being conservative is a good thing in this context.
I think our most recent example with TIF is that overperformed. You know, so I imagine over time this might, hopefully. I, I can tell you, I have had calls from three different people that are want to put their names on lots that are, do not yet legally exist. So that gives me a feeling that there is to be about here for this, and people are very excited about it. So. And then we're still in public hearing times. Is it, any questions around this at all, or?
Any other comments?
But if the, if the homes don't sell timely, then it, it increases that number, though.
Yes, it does. Yeah, because they would retain ownership as the Concordia land bank, and that's a, generates a zero property, and then it's an exempt organization. We are going to be motivated to sell because of the way that we have structured with this collaborative effort. So, um, recall with the MIH grant, we were going to partner with the builder and give him a portion of that money to use toward the purchase of materials. But then the builder was going to invest the labor and equipment cost. And so they have motivation to sell because they're investing that labor and equipment cost. They can't repeat that until they sell the bill, sell the house. And then once they sell that house, then they take the money that we gave them for the materials and they reinvest it into the next home until they're all the way done. Um, additionally, a por- a portion of that agreement means that that builder will take a slightly reduced profit in an effort to keep that final home cost down, and they won't receive that, um, a- at the end of the project, they'll receive a portion of that grant at the end to make up for that reduced profit so that they can't realize that until the whole project is done. So there is motivation to sell those homes on the part of the builders as well.
Have we had more than one builder express interest in doing this project?
We have two builders on our community resource committee. One is, is functioning as the prime builder. And then that's, that's for the moderate income homes. Now the lots reserved for the high-income homes that are part of this RHID, those are not married to the same builder within the MIH. And within the MIH grant, there's a very specific program that we had to build to make it all work. But the lots for the high-income homes, people who want to buy those lots can buy those lots. They won't be afforded the same down payment assistance. Um, they won't be, uh, afforded the same tax credit opportunity. They will get to choose their own builder. They will get to choose their own floor plan, but they need to meet that minimum threshold of valuation of home when they're done. So there will be opportunities for other builders to, uh, participate in the housing project on those four lots.
So are those looking at this map? Are they next up at Sunflower Road, those, those lots?
Yes, South of Sunflower Road. Yes.
So the infrastructure that'll be built will service those homes, but they're really independent. I mean, and, and the city will sell those.
Yes. Yeah. So Concordia land bank will own those lots. And the infrastructure that we're building will serve those. That's why they're included in this rural housing incentive district. But they're not included in the moderate income housing grant because they're not going to be limited to moderate income earners. And we did that in part because the housing study showed a large need for moderate income workforce housing, but it also showed a need for high-income homes. And the way that our neighborhoods are laid out, uh, it made sense to reserve those lots for that higher income bracket.
Any other comments? Hearing none. The public hearing is now closed. At this point, we move on to our action agenda. Ordinance twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, thirty-one ninety-six, establishing a rural housing incentive district.
Eric, commissioners, with the passage of this ordinance, if, if passed, it would create the formal boundary and designate that area as being the folks that will use their property tax increments to repay the bonds on this housing project. It doesn't bind to anything else other than using that increment for that specified period of time for that specific public purpose. That I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three, thirty-one ninety-six.
Second.
So the move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three, thirty-one ninety-six. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Very exciting project for us.
Excellent. Moving on to the minutes of the February first, twenty twenty-three meeting.
We move to approve the minutes of February first, twenty twenty-three.
The move by Commissioner Wentz, second by Commissioner Beldon to approve the minutes of the February first, uh, two thousand twenty-three. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to appropriation ordinance number three.
I move to approve appropriation ordinance number three.
So a move by Commissioner Beldon, second by Commissioner Hutchinson to approve appropriation ordinance number three. Is there any further discussion?
Just had a question. What do we ensure that's on your ground?
Fuel tanks. At the, like at the airport.
Oh, okay.
And the city shop.
Okay.
City shops are the ground with.
Oh, it is.
All the underground are here.
Okay.
Okay. Just at the year.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to resolution twenty twenty-three, twenty-one fifty, employee handbook changes.
Amazing. We just did this in November, and here we are again. Um, after we got to talking about a couple of little things that needed to be changed, it turned into a lot of things. So I'll go to those. Um, starting out, um, at some point, I realized that step, stepchildren and foster children maybe should be listed under immediate family. And when I got to looking online, um, the Department of Labor now says those, I think legally, need to be covered as well as in loco parentis, if I'm saying that right. So anyone who assumes the role of a parent or is, becomes the role of a child to that person, whether, I mean, it could be an aunt who raised you and that becomes your parent in a way. So that does need to be included. So we put that in there. And then under residency, we got to talking a lot more about the lack of, um, getting some good applications on certain jobs and where we had been. We decided to take away completely the six miles for department heads and move everything to the twenty-minute time. And then we, then we decided that it would be a good idea just to say anywhere in Cloud County. So our employee can live anywhere in Cloud County, um, or at least twenty-minute drive time, which still allows it to be Belleville or fairly close to Beloit as well. And then in section D, um, because people are having so much trouble finding housing, we changed the ninety days to say six months. And we've actually seen people have trouble finding within six months, city manager can grant them another extension if need be. And then under holiday leave, we decided that personal days really aren't holidays. So that just kind of became its own um, section or chapter, whatever. And that's, nothing changed in that. It just got moved there. And then under vacation leave, um, all right. So what we did here was, um, the fire department, when they accrue their hours, they accrue at a higher level or a higher number than everyone else because they work more hours in a day. And so the two sixteen reflects the hours that they earn in a year. Is that correct?
That, 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 that gives them the maximum cap of amount, which aligns with the hundred and sixty hours that on fire employees can have as a cap, once they've been here for ten years.
Yes, and, um, but we decided to, uh, in H down there, that even though they do, are allowed to max some, max out at a higher level, they can still only be paid out the amount that, um, the amount of hours that anyone else would be able to be paid out. So that would be a max of one hundred and sixty. Um, and then the holiday during vacation. Some of this, I wasn't real.
That was aligning the verbiage with practice. If they work longer than eight hours in a day, they get paid the eight hours holiday, and then anything above and beyond that would be vacation time if they chose to take it off.
Yes, okay, gotcha. All right. Then down to ten three, um, employee reserves for public safety, what about?
I had a question about paying that termination. What about, uh, you're, you're paying vacation, are, does that include personal day?
No, personal days aren't paid out. It's kind of a use it or lose it, and they can't be carried from one year to the next. So we find at the end of a year, we start reminding employees because, um, some don't take them right away. Um, I'm not clear on this one. If you can help, or Eric, if that's just a different way of wording this and taking out C.
This is, this was designed to address, um, the issue that we're having right now with ambulance attendants. Right now, the law, uh, the law is in our favor, but the Board of U.S. Policy says that you have to have two certified attendants to have the ambulance. We have some employees who in the past need to currently work as a primary job elsewhere in the cities that they also function as a reserve firefighter or EMT. So we wanted to clarify that if there's a nine-one-one emergency, if there's a structured fire somewhere, those employees are allowed to go ahead and leave and work that reserve job without permission. They can just go because we want all hands on deck and everybody's a team. But if there is a request for a transfer from one hospital to another, that's when they're going to have to get permission from their supervisor. They just can't have to leave their job to go on a, a five-hour transfer for it.
So differentiating a transfer from, say, an emergency call.
Yes.
I mean, a transfer is being, I guess, being not an urgent per se, but.
Right. But, but we wanted to make sure that it was clear that they could do it, and that department heads have the discretion. So if they're in the middle and down in the holes of major main break and Jeremy needs all hands on deck, you probably won't allow them to go on that transfer. But if, if they're just doing normal maintenance, Jeremy's saying, yeah, go ahead. I, I know that they're short on drivers. Might need to get that patient down the road.
Appreciate that.
So yes, then C comes out because that's addressed in A. And then on eleven four, we just added one item, um, for causes of disciplinary action, which would be conduct unbecoming to a city employee. And then on section fifteen, there were just several things, things that changed there, um, addressing some issues where it gets a little bit more, um, there's a little bit more towards that disciplinary action if they use the card in a way that they're not supposed to, using it personally. Um, fifteen, let's see, fifteen-five, I did want to add that whenever we hand out a card, give them a copy of the policy, which I've been lax in doing, so I wanted to add that. And that's about it.
I may regret asking this. I regret asking. Is there, is there a predetermined set of guidelines, what would constitute conduct unbecoming?
This is the catch-all phrase that what we've found over the last couple of years is that, uh, the items listed were very restrictive, and we were having some issues that warranted discipline, but weren't explicitly stated. And so it was very hard to follow our protocols. We followed the first model for our write-up. So you state the fact, you state the rule that was violated, you state the impact, suggestion or directive, that's the effective immediately the employee will, and then knowledge that it'll place in their personnel file. When you're trying to write that rule and infraction, um, or something that you know they need to be disciplined for, and then you can't find it in there, it, it makes it very, very, very difficult. That statement was in the harassment section of our, um, employee handbook already. So it made sense just to bring it over as the miscellaneous provision.
You probably could take the third E out of this in front of.
Well, I think that's the number.
That, yeah, that's, that's.
There's twenty-nine other ones.
Yeah.
And I didn't list all of those. This is just the one that's added.
I see.
I think it's, I think it's good to have this.
We'd had some situations that really needed to be addressed, but we were unable to. It wasn't clean right there, and, and it was something where you know it's wrong, but it's not in one through twenty-nine, so.
That's probably maybe in a, in a different way to ask. It's like, this is, this is then defendable. This is legally defendable, or we can utilize this as a, as a accepted term that would say, I have, as a supervisor, I have the authority to identify this as conduct unbecoming and, and not get into a back and forth. I don't think so.
Yeah, there's a reasonableness that comes with all of that. And then, of course, it can't be used in a kind of, you know, a discriminatory way or anything like that. So, yeah, it, it would be a situation where it's like, well, this is, I don't know if I'm becoming, well, no, I don't think it is. Well, but you know.
My, my concern would be that when you say that there's a reasonableness to it, that at that point, I'm not sure how much reason would factor into that conversation, but
possibly.
That being said, if it's still something that we can stand on, that's all it's, the one of me.
Yeah, and that, it's actually terminology that's pretty common to be used.
Fair enough.
Then I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-three, twenty-one fifty.
I, uh, the move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Beldon to approve resolution twenty twenty-three, twenty-one fifty. Is there any further discussion?
I just hear maybe a couple of type ones anymore. Those can be fixed later. Which ones are they? I think it's, um, six, six five E and six five H, unless I did it online. Public safety employees.
Oh, there's an extra E.
Okay. And then, um, I think the last one, so pay determination isn't something you change, but I think I should say, in the case of death, compensation shall be paid to the survivors. Very minor.
Good catch.
Yeah, you might be surprised how many years that was there like that.
Further conversation? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to the managers report.
Mayor Chris, I believe that you received an email directly from the United Youth at the Cloud Corp luncheon, which this year will be held Monday, March sixth, at the Cloud County Fairgrounds building from eleven forty-five to one, and it's very strategic because there's a partnership this year with the Youth Entrepreneurship Challenge. So there'll be a trade, trade show that's open to the public before that as well as after. So if you plan to come to lunch, please, you know, enjoy the trade show as well. Um, typically in the past, the city has reserved a table of eight, and then we've opened it up to commissioners and their spouses. If you want attendance at the city table, you can just let us know. Whatever spaces we have left, then we open up to department heads and their spouses as well, so we can fill a table. So I would ask that you let me know by next Tuesday if you plan to attend at the city table, and then we, then we know how to fill the table from there. Also, um, I mentioned ambulance attendance earlier this week. We did have the league contact us. There was Senate Bill two twelve that came through, and it was the senator from the Ellwood area that proposed a legislative change that would allow counties under a population of ten thousand to only have one ambulance attendant on the truck at a time, which sounds good on the surface, but existing law already allows all counties to do that, and it's the Board of EMS policy that's a little bit more restrictive. And so we were able to provide some detailed guidance and references to the policies back to our lobbyists, so that they could then take that forward and share. And we did offer an alternative, um, alternative language to the law that could be helpful to us as well, to everyone as well. Then we also, right on the heels of that, there was a hearing scheduled for, uh, Senate Bill or House Bill twenty-one thirty nineteen related to government competition, and that one was scheduled for tomorrow and got pulled, but there's a complimentary Senate bill that is similar. This stems from the, uh, Genesis Health Club fight last year with the YMCA's. Genesis Health Club said, we're a private health club. We have to charge more for our memberships because we have to pay property taxes. That's not fair. YMCA's don't have to, so there's a, an inequity there. This bill that went through or that, that was being considered, expanded that to everything in government competition. So the most obvious example for us is our concession stands, these are ball fields and pool. If this bill were to pass, any other private business that sold a bottle of pop, a bottle of water, a Gatorade, a candy bar, a hamburger, or a hot dog for consumption could then apply to the county freezer for a property tax exemption for that year. So we did some very quick figuring and leaving out restaurants that would translate to a hundred and four thousand dollar a year loss to us in property tax revenue, the city only. So the main other argument is that there are a lot of youth organizations and nonprofit organizations that frequently use concession stands to raise money to help with supplies and equipment and do other good. If this bill passed, then they would lose out as well, and I can't imagine going to a basketball game without popcorn, so that. But, but that, that's the choice that it would lead to. School district cities and counties is that either you offer concessions and take the risk of no property tax, or you take the property tax and don't do the concessions, or you leave the law alone and you're able to do both for your community. So we did prepare testimony for that. We did not submit it because that bill was pulled. We'll wait and see the language of the one next week, and then adjust the testimony as necessary for. Um, those are the major things that happened this week, so happy to answer any questions as well.
Steph's reports. Moving on.
I was going to keep this quiet early. Well, I, a couple weeks ago, talked to you about a survey, and we made the survey up. I gave the information to Megan Murdoch, and she made it pretty. And this is about as simple as I can get it. There are six questions with some pictures on the back.
And the pictures were there for?
For reference to answer some of the questions.
Question. If this, if there's a lead pipe in someone's home, is, is it government mandated? Will it be that they get that replaced? No, nobody knows what.
Nobody knows.
I mean, you probably want to, knowing that you have one here.
Yeah.
But.
Yes. All this is in.
What?
Would hope.
I mean, one would hope, yes. My question, I mean, if all of these things are identified, I mean, how are, say what?
Not mandated at this time.
The only thing that is mandated is the inventory that I have to turn in by October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, I'm just wondering what type of assistance, you know, someone hasn't updated by this point. There's going to be assistance for them to do that.
So these will go out with the water bill that gets mailed tomorrow. And then we'll put the link up on the city website too, so those that receive their water bills via email or have ACH, they can go online and fill out that questionnaire. Uh, those that get it in the mail are welcome to fill out the hard copy and drop it back with the water bill payment.
If you don't see anything on there that is, and with the blessing of the five-dollar credit and, uh, the drawing.
So this, has this been printed?
No, no.
Uh, the only thing I would wonder, Jeremy, would be to, uh, have a picture with, with different diameter pipes and a, and a rumor on top, so that somebody might be able to say like, well, how do I? Well, it's, it, I've got, I've got a fourteen-foot pipe in my house. Alright, well, we're looking for diameter, not, right, so.
Right.
Maybe just a simple picture would have, even like one tag measure that has different cross-sections of pipe across. This is something I'd see.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Really is.
I know, I always know when I leave my house and then when I get to the hardware store, I'm like.
What size was that?
Three, three. Whatever size it is, it's not the size.
Most homes, most homes are three-quarter inch lines.
Yep.
And I really have never seen any five-eights, and the, the bigger than the three-quarter, usually it's because they have an irrigation system or something. Or it's a bigger house that needs more volume.
Bigger supply. But I think it's pretty simple. I think it's pretty straightforward. It's the credit entering the window, and I think we're doing what we can. And I think on the other side of it then is that we're really pretty clear that we can demonstrate as a, as a city, we're doing what we can to try to put this inventory together. There's not a whole heck of a lot more that we could do to get the information. We're trying, we're doing.
And hopefully I can get thirty percent.
Jeremy, under three, I'm assuming you may have more than one.
Yes. Number three, that's the primary, primary plumbing. And if you have other plumbing, that's the secondary plumbing, so you can move that both. Usually it's some, it's an addition to the house, or they remodeled the kitchen, so they went and did, redid all the, the kitchen plumbing.
Right.
So maybe putting primary home building internal plumbing material ahead of that might let them know that this, is that kind of what you're speaking to, Mark, says that there might be.
Well, it was, you know, I've added additions, so the new plumbing is.
It's all fixed.
It's fixed, but.
So if you have primary or even if it's most, primary, most use.
Check all that apply.
Yeah.
Want to know, you have a little notice there. Aren't, isn't that the goal?
No.
Okay. We want to know all of it, because we have, um, proper effects and Boise, so I know that we have three.
Is this what you'll have to go in the halls to look at if they don't?
Yes, if this doesn't get turned in, we'll have to.
So, like the little couple down the street that have no idea what any of this means, could we add a line that says, please come see me or something, you know?
I thought about that today earlier, like, if they just don't want to do the survey themselves, just to call and let us know, and we'll just.
If you have questions or need assistance, please call the city. We'd be happy to answer that or. Uh, I guess, is there anywhere stated that if we don't get this turned back in, we'll, we're obligated, or we have, I mean, I don't want to like, I don't, I don't.
That's, that's kind of just, I've got a manager's man article ready to go up on the website and to go out in the blade here tomorrow as well, that, that explains that for those that, that don't respond, we'll have to, um.
Help us out like this.
Yeah, we'll have to, have to request your assistance to be able to, we'll have to request to be able to go get the information.
Probably to avoid that, because you're.
Yeah.
I assume you, you, she told me billing.
We'll, I'll change that to water customer. I think, I think UV is an internal language that we use a lot.
Oh, and the signature of.
Or just the account.
Yes.
Water account or whatever.
Because we don't, well, we really don't want tenants to fill them out. But I.
If they're, if they're paying the bill, they probably, they're gonna have to.
Yeah.
Because they're going to get the credit, yeah, since it counts. Right.
So scratch off the meat.
I don't know if you put a line, or like their phone numbers, you know, if they work overnight and aren't available during city business hours, they can, this could be me and then like you. I don't know, just a thought.
We have, we have access to their phone numbers through the, from accounting anyway, right?
Most accounts have a cell number attached to them.
Anything in years, if the kid is probably over ten years old, we didn't have the phone number, because that didn't used to be, well, maybe twelve, fourteen, that didn't used to be asked. And it's hard to find the phone number, so.
Go out tomorrow, make these quick change. Oh, yeah, you wanted a size chart.
Yeah, I think it could be helpful, at least let people know how to.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Other staff reports?
See?
I, I guess it's just a reminder, with snow routes are in effect, and these guys have done a great job of alerting the media, reminding people where they were, make sure they're updated. Um, I think you guys went around and visited some tenants and landlords and stuff, to make sure that things were ready to go. So hopefully everybody will comply and abide, and it'll make for easy snow removal and no tickets.
The more ready we are, the less snow we'll get.
True.
Um, I guess we'll say the audit is tomorrow. They were supposed to be here for the first time in four years, I should think. And snow, so they're not going to come, but they're going to pretend like they're here and be in the office, and that's what we've been the last several years, so. Um, they might be contacting you at some point. I don't know if they'll do it tomorrow, but some point.
Mr. Comments?
Yeah, I was just going to comment. I saw notes on cars on snow routes, or notes on a car. Anyway, so, kudos, because I know downtown, if we can get to that in a timely or a way this time, it'll, it'll make them all very happy. And then also, uh, just because we're doing our H I D, just to mention one more time, I think it's a really important chapter in our community's history, so I'm really happy that we're moving forward with it.
I learned recently that the hospital has like a new program for like internships for students with disabilities, and I thought that was awesome, that our hospital is operating that for the day. To the new hospital and all the great additions and things that they have going on.
I've heard some pretty good things about our new police chief, so, um, it sounds like folks are pleased with, with your involvement and optimistic about where we're going to be going with this, so I'll pass it along here. I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
We move.
Second.
The move by Commissioner Wentz, second by Commissioner Hutchinson to adjourn. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion has adjourned.